Okay, we'll call up Monday, February 10th, Williamson's Select Board Meeting to order. The first order item is to set the agenda. Does anyone have any changes on the board agenda?
Uh, just the one thing I noticed, uh, where is it here? This protocol is mis-spelled. It's P-R-O-T-O-C-O-L, not C-A-L-L.
Okay then. No, no, no.
You'd wear that if I had to write it.
I've dealt with a few protocols in my life, so.
Yeah.
Okay, and motion two, accept agenda is written with a corrected spelling.
Make a motion.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Motion being seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post.
Okay, you guys have all heard us about the laminated thing up back, how the meeting is run. If you want to look at it, it's sitting on the shelf up there. Where do you sign in? Uh, any select board announcements? This is going to be your last meeting.
This will be my last meeting.
Thank you for your service down there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Might be my last one too, let's see. Um, any public announcements? Uh, there's no fast drive. Dave, you got the report from your town office?
Uh, hello, everybody. So we completed our first full year here in Williamson. Things settled in a little bit after the latter part of the year. We finished a total of 603 calls in Powellings Town. That does not include, um, the Brookfield Section 89, which is just in Williamson. 386 of those were transports, 217 were non-transports, which is about 36% non-transport. Um, one of the reasons that we probably saw, well, we saw a service-wide reduction in calls in November, about a little over 20%, which is what knocked us off the initial mark. We thought we'd do around 700 down here. We're not entirely sure why there was a 20% reduction in calls in the month of November. We can speculate. Um, if I'll remember back to the first part of November, the University of Montana Health Network announced sweeping cuts to healthcare services in Vermont. And literally the next day, we started to see a dramatic decline in requested service. And that lasted about 26 days. And then December came around and we're busier than we've ever been. So who knows why, but if you look at our data trends, they up, 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 up. There's this big gunt for November, and we're talking 20% of our call volume for that month, which is a significant, it's over 100 calls. Um, but anyway, it didn't affect us at all. Um, just the month was easy and everyone got a little extra rest, so.
Was that just in Williamson or is that all your town?
Yeah, across our entire operation, which was pretty interesting to see the, you know, the drop, so. Um, so yeah, overall, that was a pretty interesting time to see that, how that all turned out. I can't say that that's exactly what caused it. It's obviously timing looks very coincidental. Um, so our average, uh, call on scene time for the entire year on final call or time our dispatch timed out the call to time on scenes even is 38 seconds. Um, questions I can answer for you?
No, seems like things are going pretty well now.
Yeah, and like I said, it's been busy. Uh, that's, uh, I talked with Gordy. I think he said somewhere between 430 and 450 was the year before. Um, so it's about a 25% increase in calls, um, that we saw this year. So we'll see where, right now, we're off to the busiest start of any year we've ever seen. We'll see, uh, I mean, service-wide, we've done more calls in the last five and a half weeks than we did all year in Williamson last year. So we're, we're 628 calls as of tonight since January 1st. So it's been a busy start to the year. A lot of people need care. That's what we're here to provide.
I haven't heard anybody complain about it, you know, as far as service-wise and stuff like that. I mean, it seems like everything, everybody seems to be happy with it.
Yeah, we haven't had any, I had one phone call from a resident that had a question about how, it was, it was an operational question they called and asked, um, you know, when a call goes out, who's privy to that information? And I said, anybody with a scanner. It goes out all the airwaves, so if you're, if you tell 911 what your medical problem is, which is obviously what they want, and that goes out all the airwaves with your address, people draw conclusions. I, not a lot I can do about that, so. And they were understanding. They were initially upset when they called that people knew why the ambulance was at their house, and they said, I have no control over that.
That's something that's been longstanding for years, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's got better with certain codes and things, but yeah.
Do you want to have any questions for Dave? Thank you for coming in. We appreciate, appreciate the work you guys are doing.
We'll see, um, in the spring, probably, I don't know the exact timing. Um, but I told you back in, um, October when I was here lastish, that our, our next round of ambulance is already here, um, so that you'll see more than a, it'll probably be May-June that we have some new ambulances that will be rolling out. So at least one is already ready to go. The other two are sitting in the town garage, and we'll start getting them ready over the next couple of months. So there'll be three new ones that will go on the road, um, in that May-June timeline. Oh, uh, I don't know if, did you get a letter from the press yet? And we're, we're in budget right now, because you know, our budget is in May. But our projected per capita for this year for all of our towns is going to stay at 65, the same as last year. So there shouldn't be any increase. Of course, we're in budget now. We'll, we'll have a final word, you know, in the coming weeks. So obviously, we'll communicate down to Jackie, but if everything holds the way it is, it should stay the same as it was last year.
Good, good news?
Yeah.
That's good news.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, commissions, committees, trustees, and other board announcements. Hear that? Okay, next item is approval of warrants, SBE 22131 and 132. Have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Next item is approved, uh, warrants. Payroll warrants, 126, 229. Have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion to approve.
You second?
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I accuse myself because I realize I'm on it, so.
Thanks.
Okay, next item is approval of the select board minute from 113. Have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion to approve this select board minutes of 113.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Town manager report, Jackie?
Delinquent taxes as of today are $181,886.77. Waters at $15,125.39, and sewers at $21,804.20. The list has gone to the attorney for tax sale. There are currently 16 properties on the list. I mentioned in a previous select board meeting with the new laws, they cannot tax sale anything that's less than two years in arrears. So that's why the list is lower than it normally is because of the new, um, new law that went into effect. Um, winter maintenance, it's been a never-ending battle with snow. We used roughly 7,000 yards of sand of the 9,000 that were, that was put up. We do have some stockpiled in the pit, um, that we can bring in if we need to. But we are going through sand considerably, considering we sit down snowstorms just about every day. Um, the December 18, 2023 event for FEMA has been closed out. I've signed off on another $257,000, um, pending for December. And I just closed out the July 2024 FEMA today. I will have my, everything has been uploaded to CATZ. So we will have our closeout meeting probably next Thursday. Because, uh, Tim from FEMA needs to give the other, um, agencies, the state of Vermont, and then, um, the other departments in FEMA, um, time to, to reach out to be part of it because they, they call in. So that has been completed, and we've got roughly about $200,000 coming in from that. I was just looking for my, there it is right here. So total FEMA income to date that we have received is $2,371,983.16. Our total FEMA expenses, um, as of February 4th, 2025 is $3,187,514.39. We're looking at roughly another half a million dollars, um, that's coming in from that. So the town's portion of the three events will be just under a half a million dollars, which is roughly what we estimated, um, after the July 23 flood. We're waiting to see if we hit the, the max for the event, where they would, FEMA would bump it from 75 to 90%, which they did, would be July 2023. But they're not sure at this point if they're gonna, if they're gonna hit that point. So we're still looking at it at the 75% for, uh, July 2024 event. So that's where we stand with that right now. Like I said, I've got $257,000 that I've signed off on, and I'm waiting on July for the state to send me down all the paperwork for that, which is roughly another 250. And then we're waiting on prices from Pike for, um, paving Cogswell Street and Robar Road, uh, for next year, so I can apply for the paving grant. And they're also going to give us a cost on Adams Road. David's reached out to Tiffany, and she's supposed to be, uh, putting those figures together for us. Also, you know, um, I've spoken with Michelle Redman, our District, uh, Six Administrator, um, in regards to possibly applying for a structures grant for Henry Road for, for that culvert that blows out every time we have a flood, to get it up to, um, the size that it needs to be in regards to the two other ones that we replaced back in 2013, 14.
There is, um, a couple companies that's got pretty good size now. They're into paving pretty heavy. It's Jay Hutchins. And, uh, Jay McDonald bought out, uh, SD Paving, I think it is.
Yeah, yeah, last year.
Who was the second one?
I think it's going under. It was SD, it used to be SD Paving, but I think it's Jay McDonald now, but I'm not sure either one of the other. I don't know if they kept that name or not. But Jay, Jay Hutchins got a rich, and they're into it pretty heavily now, I think. So they might give you.
I think they actually bought the namesake too. It's probably still SD Paving. It's just owned by them, but yeah. All their equipment is down in our yard.
So they're, they're doing a lot of telling, telling, always.
And the last thing, um, we approved, we approved the reappraisal, um, bid for Bruno, Kathy Bruno, to do the reappraisal. State's requiring that we have an additional, um, assessor that will oversee the project. And I told you that she had one that was going to be working with her, that she'd worked with in Plainfield. And I have his price. Uh, he would come in and he would do the businesses. He would do, um, Industry Street, um, Progressive Plastics, and all of the higher-end businesses that will need to be done that Kathy can't do. And I have his quote, um, which is $15,600 to do, to do all of that and oversee that. And he would actually be the one, if we end up going, if anybody grieves and ends up going, um, to the, the state level, he would be the one that would go in and testify on behalf of the town for that. But I do have his, um, we met with him, Gordy, myself, Kathy Bruno, um, her son, who's going to be working with her, May, and myself all met with him two weeks ago. He just sent me the, the contract for his portion of it.
So the sum you need is to vote on the privilege.
Yeah.
So $200,000 now?
Yeah, you can do that now.
So what was that number again?
$15,600.
Fifty or fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Okay, well, we need to have someone make a motion.
Make a motion. What's his gentleman's name again?
Uh, his name is Ted Nelson.
Ted Nelson.
And the company is Vermont Appraisal Company out of Essex Junction.
Two, uh, have Vermont Appraisal Company. And I can't, I didn't get the whole number, 15,000?
600.
Oh, 600.
Here's some.
I'll sign it down.
Motion being seconded in further discussion?
Just one question for me. You said if they have a, I've got my brain here, Jay. If they have an issue with their appraisal, because I've dealt with this once in town, because we were select board members, we had to come to it.
Agree with you.
Yeah, if they have agreements, does that still come to the town or does it go?
It still, it still starts at the, um, the town level. And then if they don't agree with that, then it can move on to the state level and then it. But he would be, um, the one that would do that. He's been doing this for many, many years. I actually worked with his father at Guy Wilson Agency in, um, Beppel. He grew up in Beppel, um, back in the eighties.
Okay, another discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. That's it? Okay. Anybody have any questions for Jackie?
Yes, sir.
Just curious where the hydrology reports came in for Tower Road, Robar Road, and Cogswell Street?
Um, the Robar Road hydraulics, hydraulic study has been done, and we increased the size of that culvert there to a 30-inch. Um, the second one for Cogswell Street is in the works with the state right now. That's probably going to be the same size, uh, and that will be replaced when we, we do the paving up there. That, that culvert will be done and all of the, um, the risers for the, um, the storm drains and the, the wiring sewer will be taken care of at that point.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. On the new business. Protocol for, uh, select board meetings. There was a post recently on the, uh, filter website or whatever it was, about, uh, the board doesn't allow enough time for people to, uh, address any concerns they have or whatever. She needs, there should be more than one meeting a month. And, uh, the situation is this. We do have one, we don't have physical meeting where we all meet, but we, we have another thing where we sign warrants. It's the third Monday or something like that, or the fourth Monday, to take care of any bills that need to be paid, stuff. And every one of us goes in and town hall looks it over and, okay, so it signs it. That's how, how that gets done. So there is a board that goes on and just this meeting. And, uh, if anyone has something special that they want to discuss with the board, what we need to do is have you contact the town manager and get put on the agenda. And then that way, the reason for that is, we have no idea what somebody comes in like tonight without knowing what it is, it's not on the agenda, what, what they're asking about or looking to find out. And it doesn't leave us any time to, if we want to redo some research on it on our own or whatever, to see what, what this is all about. Or the, or the manager, Anthony Fines come in blind and all, once they get this issue to take some time. So that's, that's why we had the agenda process, so it gives the manager and the board time to get a heads up on what's going on rather than being blindsided on it. Now, if just a minor thing, that's fine, but if they get something that's going to take some time, we need to have that agenda so we can allot enough time, time for it. As far as, uh, necessity of having two meetings a month, we did away with that at least, at least 10 years ago or more, probably. I just, with the town, with the town manager, former government, um, she does all legwork. We basically have to approve it versus some towns where the, the board has to do what she does on top of it, so it takes more time. So we would be wasting the town's money if we had two meetings, two meetings a month. You have to have the people here recording stuff and, and manager here, and so. Unless something really changed, drastic changed, there's really no need for it. We, we could go through these meetings in an hour, hour and a half, two hours at the most, most of the time. And there really isn't need for the second meeting unless, but if something, something came up that had, we had to meet, we could always want a meeting. Something serious that couldn't wait till the next meeting, so. So I just wanted to bring that to light for people that aren't aware of how we do this or curious how, why, as to why we do stuff. So do you, the board have stuff you want to add to that, or?
No.
Does any of you board members think there's any need to have one, one meeting a month?
No, I think, I mean, I'm certainly one learning a lot of things, and I, I appreciate you explaining how things are done. Certainly, again, I'm going to reiterate, if any public person wants to bring something to the select board, I don't think there's ever been any issues with us discussing it thus far, at least my year here. We've discussed many a thing, so, um, the public is more than welcome to provide us the information. And well, that's what our job is to do, is to listen to the public.
Jackie, everything? Okay, so that takes care of that. Uh, view of town meeting budget and articles for the warning. We've had the past special meetings before town meeting to go over this. Probably a handful of people show up. About par for the course, so we thought our idea was we could do it tonight. It would be on the town website and TV, or be, TV and that. If anybody tried to explain things, just like we would if there was a public hearing, just to eliminate the need for that. It'll, it'll serve a lot more people by doing it this way. So I'm going to let Jackie kind of lead the charge on this and go through it item by item.
So under the general fund breakdown, under the select board expenses, there was an increase of $122.40. The wages were increased by 1,500, um, which increased by FICA to 122.40. But with removing the, uh, CDTV contract for, um, filming, uh, it reduced that, that line item by $1,500 because everything is uploaded directly to YouTube here, and then CDTV will, um, upload it for free to their, um, their portal.
Just a second. If anyone has, wants to, just put your hand up if you got a question. Have Jackie answer it, if you can.
The planning commission expenses was a decrease of $4,342.30. The town report expenses, that was an increase of 700, and that's due to, um, postage going up and cost of printing going up. Listers expenses, that was an increase of $52,684.98. So four years ago, when the town converted to a staff assistant, which is for the listers, the treasurer, and the town manager, emerged into a full-time position, the entire expenses for the staff assistant was put under my town manager's budget. This has now been split out between the lister's office and the town manager's budget, um, as the staff assistant works 20 hours for the listers and 20 hours for the town manager and the treasurer. So that shows a, um, better idea of what the expenses are for each one of those. Also, the lister's wages were increased to offset moving to a part-time assessor position from elected the listers, if that gets voted through a town meeting. That's an Australian ballot article on, um, a town meeting. BCA expenses were reduced by $2,700, $2,701.80. That's, um, due to, um, a reduction in additional elections, state and federal. Elections expenses reduced by $1,506, and that's also due to a reduction in the additional elections for state and federal. The manager's office was reduced by $4,665.11, and that's the lister's staff assistant portion was moved to the lister's budget with a new staff assistant requiring health insurance as the prior staff assistant received opt-out insurance. She didn't take the prior one, didn't take the full insurance. She took the opt-out portion, so hence the increase in the health insurance. The town clerk treasurer's office expenses was increased by $10,517.72. That was due to wage increase, which in turn increases the retirement and the health insurance increase and workers' comp and unemployment. That all goes with the wage increase. General operating budget expenses was increased by $8,510.89. Part of that increase was due to the professional audit. Due to the, um, FEMA and ARPA money, we are required to do an additional single audit under the federal regulations. So that was the increase for that. And also postage, telephone, and internet, um, there was an increase. Other operating expenses increased by $2,400. That's the landfill monitoring testing increase. They're reducing one test, so that only has to be done every three years, but they were increasing, um, the amount of time, so a couple of the other, um, testings have to be done. Public safety expenses, that was increased by $33,400. That's the streetlight electricity increase and the policing contract increase. Animal control expenses increased by.
Just a second.
Oh, sorry.
On this one here, on the policing contract, we, we kind of like polled the people in the audience a few meetings back, and we are upped our contract with Orange County to like one and a half times what, what it was.
Yeah, it went from 20 hours to 30 hours a week.
Trying to hopefully get a little more, better police protection, so that was the reason for that.
And that could, that contract ends July 1st.
Correct.
So if there is, hopefully, Orange County will do fine, but if the public's concerned, that's a contract. So July 1, 2020, what year are we in, 2025, um, it could go to another police agency.
Yeah, we had a couple, another proposal, they were pretty close to a medical, as far as cost-wise goes. There's not many options out there, really.
Let's see.
Animal control expenses.
Thank you. Animal control expenses were increased by 765, and most of that is FICA and Medicare, because Sam is considered an employee, um, under the town. Their town EMS reduced yearly amount due to increase in revenue. Fire department expenses increased by $18,755.80. Wages are up by 14,000 due to call volume. Training is up by 2,000, backup generator fuel, 2,000. Backup generator fuel, 2,000. Capital communication dispatch is up by $2,936. And the truck replacement reserve is up $10,000. Under the highway department, highway operating expenses increased by 20,000 and that is due to an increase in the cross ledge line item by 10,000. Tree removal by 7,500 and guard rail increased by 1,500. Highway department expenses increased by $4,417. Truck number 11 is up by 2,500. And equipment rental is up by 1,500 and insurance went up $417. Highway reserve expenses increased by 50,000 and that's due to the road rehab reserve increased by $50,000. And then the highway employee benefits increased by $37,833. Wages are up by $26,680 and then in turn increases the FICA, Medicare, BEAMERS, workers' comp. And then the health insurance increased by $11,153 because the new employee, former employee that left was getting his insurance to somebody else. So that was an increase of $11,153. That takes care of the highway.
Is Dave Cole Island manager?
I'm sorry?
Is Dave Cole Island manager?
Yeah, he's the road foreman.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Anyone have any questions for Jackie? Okay. Thank you for putting this all together.
Yes.
Okay, let's see. You got any point for tobacco license for the pump and pantry? You have a motion on that?
I make a motion, approve.
Your motion?
Here with the first fire.
So the listers' article is to do away with the elected listers and to hire a part-time assessor to take their position. Currently, we have, we had two appointed listers for the year because Scotty didn't get his ballot in, his petition in for his position. So he was appointed at the reorganization meeting in March. And then William Graham was appointed as a lister to give it a trial length for the year and he's no longer interested. So currently, there are two positions that are open. Gordy's position is up in March of 2026. And it's, it's been increasingly hard to get listers that want to work. The, the public isn't overly friendly when the listers go out to, to look at properties, which is a concern. So after talking to the board, we felt that this was a good time to put it on the ballot to make it a part-time assessor's position. They'd be an employee of the town and do away with the listers. And they would do the same job that the listers do. They would go out and redo the properties and kind of do everything that needs to be done on a part-time basis.
I think the board should know that William, and also a few years ago, Stanley Pete ran for that position. And the current listers still have, would not work with him. They would not tell him when they're meeting, would tell him when they're right around. They wouldn't show him anything. Too different. So that's why you can't get anybody because current people won't work. And, and, you know, we almost want to try it. Stanley Pete would want to try it. Very similar situation happened with the young.
I understand where you're coming from, but, well, the listers are elected. We're pretty limited as to what we can do as far as, and people elect them to do it. I mean, I agree with what you're saying. It shouldn't happen that way. But how do we stop it? I think he's electing the same people back here.
So are we, you know, another one, additional costs would be to have an assessor?
So I talked to Kathy Bruno, who is a former lister, and she's also the one that's going to be doing the reappraisal. There are roughly 1,650 properties. In talking to her, she said easily, a part-time assessor, anywhere from 10 to 20 hours a week, depending on, you know, the time of year, would easily, easily be able to do the job with the, with the assistant who would do all of the downloads for Homestead and all of that. We did increase it to a $20, $20 an hour in the budget for, based on 15 hours a week. That would be offset in the first year with the reappraisal because the listers are always paid out of the reappraisal reserve for any work that they have to do for that part. So for this year, the, the $20 an hour for, based on 15 hours a week, would cover the cost plus what additional would be out of the reappraisal. And then we'd have a better grasp on it for the, for the next budget year to put it up to where it would need to be.
Cool. You took, you, there, that's, that's actual assessor appraiser for 20 hour.
Yep, yep. Actually, there's, Kathy's son is, he will be certified by September and he showed some interest in the position. He grew up here in Williamstown and he's interested in the position and he's, he's helped his mother with the reappraisals and doing in Plainfield and in other areas. So he's shown some interest in it, but we'll be able to offset the cost out of the reappraisal fund, reserve fund for the first year. So I mean, that's, it might be a-
I just know I had appraisal done on the firm, but we didn't point out.
Yep. But there, that was an appraisal firm versus what you would have to do compared, because there's already an assistant in there that is in training to do. She has, and she's taking all of the training of an assessor. So she would do a lot of the paperwork in the office. So, I mean, for the first year, we're all right because we're going to be in the middle of a reappraisal, starting in the end of August, beginning of September of this year. So I think we'll be, we'll be okay there.
I want you to get rid of the elected listers, the elected members.
We're in a situation where we don't have enough listers. Nobody's running for it. I mean, we gotta, we gotta do something. We gotta, we gotta get the town appraised by someone. So it may not-
Just like with the treasurer's position, when you went to, did away, the charter change and did away with the elected treasurer and went to a employee. I mean, it's basically going to be the same thing. There are people out there that can do it. I mean, Kathy could even do it. But I mean, her son was, he wants to get into it.
I understand that co-ala.
And if the town does vote, do away with the listers. Gordy's term would end 45 days from the date of March 4th. So we're looking at the end of April. It's up to him.
One thing about having it be in a hired position, we shouldn't be getting into situations like you're just talking about, to have some control over. You know, there's now, if they're elected, we have no control over. Like in Barb's case, we can't tell her what to do. She's elected and it's the same, same with the listers. We really can't get into it with them because they're elected. Our hands are tied, pretty much. But if it was a higher position, we could see just what you just mentioned didn't happen and whatever else may come up. You may, you know, I would tend to agree with you. Probably $20 an hour isn't going to buy you much. But it's a start for this year anyway. We'll probably have to adjust, as Jackie said. But what's going on right now? Is it working? So we gotta do something. Will we have any questions on the town report?
I've got one. What is ongoing rate in other towns for listers? What do other towns similar in size really don't pay for listers?
Come on, you ask, Richard. A lot of them are minimum wage for elected listers. Unfortunately.
Is that like $15 an hour?
I can understand that. $20 an hour, I think you're going to have a couple, you'd have a couple finding somebody anyway.
Right? So I think we're kind of fortunate to get this through and work for $20 an hour for, at least for this year, till we figure it out, so.
It may, it may not work out. We don't, you know, but at least it's a start. We don't have to adjust for it.
I wonder if you're going to find what you want, $20 an hour, and say, I think it all we want, all we think, I don't know what we would do about it.
At least with the, being in the middle of a reappraisal, part of that would be funded out of the reappraisal reserve fund, so.
Perfect.
Right, and then we can budget for it for next year.
I would agree that we're probably going to have to spend more, but we'll start somewhere, so. Okay, anybody else set for that? Okay, now onto the liquor, tobacco license for the pump and pantry. Do you have anything you need to say, Barbara?
No, we, Sam didn't bring in the check, so the town portion is covered, so we feel like it's okay.
It's all set, they know that. You have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the tobacco and liquor license for the pump and pantry.
I'll second that.
Motion made, secondary, any discussion?
And I just confirming that he's paid all of-
He's paid the town, our fee. You'll have to pay the state and their fee.
So I can maybe just make an amendment that once the state fee is paid, that's usually how we do this?
No.
Okay, town fee, okay. If town fee is paid-
Once Barb gets the check from the town, that's, that goes to the state, that's what we do.
Right, then I go into a portal and select board approved on today's date and check back, the town has been paid.
Okay, it's up, yeah. I think I'm good as long as he sounds like he's paid the town's.
Okay, you all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We need to appoint a liaison, the State Ethics Commission. Jackie, you follow me for that?
Yes, they did.
Unless somebody else wants to do it? Is that up?
No.
Taking my training.
And one thing, we're supposed to all be getting trained, right? Even the select board members, correct? When does that do?
Um, they are, well, starting January 1st. So there's, there's a PowerPoint.
Okay.
I mean, what did it take us, Barb? An hour?
Hour and a half, five minutes.
Yeah, didn't take very long. And then there's like four or five questions at the very end and then you click on it and you're approved and it submits an email to, to me. Actually, I got Rama's today. His was, he's taken his and it was emailed from the planning commission, so anytime we can get you the link.
Yeah, I would say please send us the link because, again, I spoke to someone there and I just wanted to make sure, being a firefighter within the town, I don't want to step on the wrong toes and be in the right spot, so.
Right.
That's who I spoke to, so. She, she mentioned that there was going to be a training for every employer. I don't remember if I liked the official route.
Two weeks ago.
About a month ago now.
Yeah, time flies.
Yeah, it was after the select board meeting last minute.
So you've been the liaison, you've been in charge of, make sure you do.
Do you want to do that?
I don't have a problem with doing it. It has to be an employee of the town.
Because you want to, Barb.
Knock him down.
That's all right. I'm not going to bite you for it.
Well, if we just work together on it, if I know somebody else supported on the end.
You can appoint us both. Just like green up.
Okay. So you want both be appointed or just?
She, she can go.
She's good.
Out back or out?
I'll have her back.
We would need to post it from the board to point Jackie as a liaison to the State Ethics Commission for town. You like that?
I'll, I'll second his, yeah, because that's a whole lot to go out.
Okay, the boss has been seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Right, Jackie over here, big letters, thank you.
During the meeting, Jackie and I had, as far as setting agendas, as we do every month, a couple times. It was pointed out to me that she had a lot of extra hours vested in this, three different July, July flood of '23, the December flood of '23, flood of '24 in July. She has broke down what she has. And FEMA did pay extra for her time and Dave's time, in which Dave was compensated for through his alley pay for all the time he put into it, over and above his normal job time. Jackie has just got her straight salary and she hasn't compensated in any way of comp time or anything else for all the hours, extra hours spent in dealing with this. So I asked her to, forgot what it come, come up to for the floods, so we could have a discussion on it, how we should take care of this if we want to or not. And I asked her to, she wanted to take some time off, got time for it and trade for the hour she spent for monetary amount. And I think her comment to me was that really can't take too much more time off because of the workload she has now. So I left it up to her to come up with a plan of how she'd like to do it. This bottom line under 6,900 is all three floods. So if I could give it any more thought, how you want to discuss this, what works for
Roger, he's got the questions.
Roger?
These hours that the town didn't pay for.
What's that?
These hours that the town didn't pay for. Oh, Dave, man.
No, Dave, Dave was compensated. He gets overtime. I'm, I'm, based on my salary, I do not get, I did not get compensated for this, these additional hours.
Town didn't pay you for the detail?
No.
Over and above?
Says over and above.
And worse power?
Right.
Beyond work power?
Yep. I had, for the July 2023 flood, I had an additional 98 and a half hours for the- a half hours. For the December twenty-three, I had an additional forty-seven hours. And for the July twenty-four, I had an additional twenty-two hours. And it's all been closed out. These are all my reports, my CATC reports for, that were submitted to FEMA. FEMA paid for myself and for Dave, we got a little over thirty-six thousand dollars from FEMA, which is all for admin, to pay administrative costs. So if the town had gone out and hired somebody else to come in and do that work, that check would have gone to them. For the December, the CATC is a little over eight thousand, and for the July twenty-twenty-four, it's a little over five thousand dollars that the town, and we've received thirty-six thousand dollars for, if we closed out the July twenty-twenty-four. The eight thousand's already been approved by the state that's coming in for the December twenty-twenty-three, and it's closed out to the July of twenty-twenty-four, which is just over five thousand dollars.
Do other towns do this?
I have no idea. I know Chelsea hired a completely different person to do theirs first year, so I had a completely different person to do theirs. Their administrators, administrative assistants do not do it. I don't know. Tunbridge, Brenda Field, who was the Emergency Management Coordinator, she's doing Tunbridges. So I'm sure she's getting compensated for her hours that she's worked. I know, like Moretown for their, is it Moretown or Morris, Mark, yeah, Moretown. Moretown with the July of twenty-twenty-four, they've hired a completely different person from, from the town that's contracted to do their stuff, their stuff for them.
I know some of those towns don't have town managers.
Yeah, I mean, some don't have town managers, but, but this was, this was above and beyond the hours that I was actually in the office.
Well, that's a whole lot less than what we were compensated for from FEMA. And I think she does an outstanding job of getting as much money as we possibly could get. And that's why I wanted to bring it for you guys and let you know about it and get your thoughts on it. And so if you come to a conclusion, a dollar amount would be the best way to go. So I guess we look at to compensate her sixty-nine hundred, six dollars and twelve cents, is that the right amount? Bottom line on this, for the extra hours she put in on this. I think, I think his money well spent for what she's done, getting all the money she did, but I'm just one person on the board.
Right. Initially, this is all kind of relatively new, just coming in as a package with the numbers. I, I, there's no disagreement that you worked those hours and where other people got compensated differently and you didn't. Hey, you, that is due to you. And you do an excellent job, as far as I'm concerned, and above and beyond. And this is, Lee speaking of, the only question, where would this money come from to pay this?
FEMA. From FEMA.
Oh, okay, okay, as long as it's there to cover.
FEMA, we've already gotten the thirty-six thousand dollar, and thirty-six thousand plus from FEMA for the July twenty-three flood.
Okay.
Already gotten that. The eight thousand that we're getting for the December has been submitted, and that check should be coming within the next couple of weeks. And then the five thousand, I just closed out, so that'll be probably by the end of February, first part marks, and that one will be coming in.
Okay, I, I, I was, I was just, that's where I was trying to get to the answer where the money was gonna come from.
FEMA for administrative.
Okay. It just wasn't gonna come out of the budget somewhere else, and that, that's what I was getting at. That's covered. I'm, I'm, that's way even easier to swallow, you know.
Roger?
Just remember, the FEMA's not a hundred percent paid back. We had borrowed over a million dollars to keep the length on. The taxpayer, it's pretty hard to pill and swallow.
Right, there's no, no disagreement with you on that, Roger, I'm a taxpayer too. But we're not talking a million dollars, we're talking some general compensation that's due. And if the money is there, it's there. So, and that's, I, I agree.
So that FEMA does not cover will come out of our taxpayer's pocket.
Oh, fair enough.
And the interest, our-
It was actually zero interest.
And we don't get compensated for that.
No, I don't-
We didn't, we didn't pay any interest on the money that we borrowed from the bond bank.
It all paid back?
It's all paid back. It was paid back in October. The full amount that we borrowed was paid back. And actually, the passive board, which I happen to be a member of, voted to pay all of the interest for all of the towns for the bond bank out of our reserve. So.
I thank them for that.
Yes. Well, they, it was much appreciated that they did that. But they, they stepped forth that because they're, they're the insurance company for all of the towns, and they felt that that was the right thing to do, to help all the towns to then borrow the money from the bond bank. So there was zero interest.
I certainly can vouch for a lot of the extra hours she did above her normal hours on each one of these events. A lot of time was spent right in, well into like midnight one night, I don't know, we finally-
Well, there was a couple hours in the wee hours the night I was on the phone with Jackie and sent it from my house.
This, this went on, every, every event, some, you know, similar sort, but not ours has got really, I would thought of it more than that.
In the forty-nine thousand that FEMA, because at one point we were discussing about trying to help another employee a while ago. So this money that FEMA has given back to town is what people have worked, correct? Like that's what it's designed for?
CATC is the administrative costs that are incurred by the town to handle all of this. So it's the, it's the correspondence, it's all of the meetings, it's the site visits with FEMA. And it's just for Dave and myself.
Okay.
But Dave, Dave is not salaried, so he received overtime for all of his additional hours that he worked. So he was compensated for all of his hours.
Through the town, and then FEMA also paid for some of that as well?
And they, they, yep, they recouped it. So his portion of, I have it broken down there. So this is July of twenty-twenty-four. So for my hours, it was three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and seventy-two cents, and for Dave's hours, it was five hundred and four, five hundred and four dollars. For December of twenty-twenty-three, Dave was five hundred and seventy-four dollars, and I was five thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. And then for the July of twenty-twenty-three, Dave was twenty-nine hundred and eighty-two dollars, and mine was, they also reimbursed for all the benefits too. So it's, and my, just my hours was twenty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents.
So how are these hours lost? I guess that's my question. Maybe you explained it, I just missed it. I will say, I'm just gonna say one thing. So my previous career, unfortunately, when a firefighter got up to a certain level, they were salaried and they lost their overtime. So for instance, COVID, we unfortunately had a lot of chiefs that worked significantly more than any other firefighter. The firefighters got their overtime, the chiefs got nothing. And I don't know how the city did it, to be quite honest. They might have done things here and there. I just want to make sure we're doing things legally. I, I appreciate everything everyone does. I just want to make sure we're contractually right.
So up until three, four years ago, I believe it was, myself and Barb were allotted comp time, anything over thirty-eight hours a week or over my forty hours a week.
Yeah, I did.
They, they changed that, so now it's forty-three hours a week for me. So I don't get any comp time unless I work forty-three hours or more. And Barb is, what is yours? Forty-two? Forty, yeah, forty-two.
So then, I guess, yeah, the question is, how are these hours lost? How did the state, or fed state, why were you not reimbursed for the forty-seven hours?
This town has been reimbursed for it.
Okay.
But we haven't paid here for it.
Okay. So the fed, the federal government has paid the town of Williamstown?
Forty-nine thousand dollars.
So-
Thirty-six thousand.
So who, who else?
We've gotten thirty-six thousand dollars for the July twenty-twenty-three. That check has come in. We have another one for a little over eight thousand dollars coming in for the December flood. That's already been approved, just waiting for the, for the state. It's already been obligated, I'm just waiting for the state to submit it to the treasurer. And then the July twenty-twenty-four is just a little over five thousand dollars. And that check is, that's all been submitted, waiting for FEMA to send it to the state, and then they'll send that check to the town.
All right. And that, so it's from between you and, again, I-
Dave.
Dave. That, so that's what the federal money is coming in for you and Dave?
Yep. So his portion of the federal money has gone into the highway miscellaneous for administrative, because this isn't road damage money. This is clearly administration. And the, my administration goes under the general fund, under miscellaneous income to the general fund, because I'm paid out of the general fund, not on the highway fund.
So basically, the feds have already paid this money. All right, that sounds fine.
Dave didn't pay already by the town, because it's hourly.
Yeah.
Jackie, Jackie hasn't been paid for the extra yet.
So with all the money, so basically, all the applications filed, all the paperwork that was done was designed, the federal government said, we are reimbursing the employees, and we just have to give, because it went into the, essentially the wrong fund, I'm guessing?
No, no, it is going to the wrong fund.
Well, I can see. Well, I know that's what I'm saying. We have to approve that it's appropriate for what you-
Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
I would make the motion that we compensate Jackie six thousand nine hundred and six dollars and twelve cents to come out of the FEMA administrative money.
I second that motion.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you for all the hard work you did. Town did well as far as getting all that money back.
Yes.
Town's in much better shape now, as far as future floods, as we improve. Couple areas where there was very undersized culverts with very large culverts now, that caused a lot of, a lot of the dollar damage that was caused. So we shouldn't be losing South Hill Road again, hopefully. And then on Gilbert Road, that was sagged by Richie Clarkson, and culvert's went from being three foot, and one was three foot, one was five foot, to, it did nine foot wide and about seven foot tall, flat bottom. So, I mean, it's gonna take some drainage of water. I ain't gonna say it's never gonna happen again, but way ahead of the curve now, so. Lot of other areas, the down road system that were marginal at best before the storm, that got some pretty good upgrades done to them as well. So town, town came out pretty well, I think, all in all. There's a lot of work. Made a lot of work for people. Jackie certainly put a lot of work in here and Dave, and the rest of the road crews should be appreciated for all the effort they put into it.
And we did, for the, for the July twenty-twenty-three, FEMA reimbursed us ninety percent of all the damage. They reimburse a hundred percent for CATC for the administrative, so that's a hundred percent. But they, they reimbursed us ninety percent where it's normally seventy-five percent. So we did get that, and still waiting to hear whether the state is gonna kick in there. We normally get about twelve and a half percent from the state towards flood damage, so I'm still waiting to, so potentially we could get another good chunk of money from the state, so we'll be in even better. And we're-
Okay, we have no old business? Still around the table?
I was just gonna say, like, reading the, because I've gotten very new at this, but again, I think the work Jackie has done in Article eleven, we didn't, we have surplus of a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars this year. Last year was nineteen thousand dollars, so this, I think, is the best year we've really saved the town money. And a hundred thousand is gonna go help taxpayers. I think that's one of my, and I apologize to everyone that works for the town, because I've wanted a nice winter and it's finally here, it's been years. So I apologize.
You're getting a lot better understanding how everything works.
Oh, well, same. Dad, let me throw him his truck, so I can pull my driveway.
I have the smell of ice rain, that's, though.
Scott, you have anything?
No, I'm all set.
Um, yeah, just, just this letter that came in our package from Sam Poulter.
Oh, should be on control.
Just breakdown of control, the breakdown of what was done. Fantastic. I read it. Good, good information. People have questions. Thanks.
And I need you for the new, the LCT, uh, dog.
Okay. And I need to reach out to them, because obviously, post my surgery, I have not, I don't believe there's gonna be any to help update the laws, and I will reach out to them again. I'm crawl-walk run right now, so I gotta let everyone.
Everything's all good, I don't know.
Everything's going fine, it's-
Once again, Chris, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yes, Chris.
Glad to work with all you guys.
Yes, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Sorry. Get this side of the table.
I'm gonna say, make sure you know where the meetings are.
How can I forget?
Oh, you won't.
Thanks, everyone, for coming.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I got a big question.
No, I make the motion to adjourn. There we go.
Any second?
I'll say it.
Okay, Bush made second. All in favor?
Aye.